Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a roll call. Commissioner Van Buren?
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Hearing none. Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Would everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, everyone, to silence all of their electronic devices. Next, first item of business is the approval of minutes from the January 13th, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Okay. Second?
Avow, Lavoy.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons? Commissioner Van Buren says yes, and Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Minutes approved. Seeing that we have no one from the public here tonight, we're not going to go forward with the open forum.
Unless anyone submitted them online.
Good question. Staff, was there any submissions prior to the meeting?
No.
Thank you. Public hearing procedures will be a bit modified tonight because staff, village staff, will be doing the presentation. But first, we'll have the presentation from village on the two items that we have, and followed by any public comment or staff comment and public comment, followed by the commissioners and the voting. We have the building commissioner, Jason Vitell, with us tonight. We also have the village attorney, John Zemanak, to help us. And the first item of new business is PZC 024, 2021, Planning and Zoning Commission, to consider a request from the Village of Westmont regarding the following proposed zoning ordinance text amendments.
Good evening. My name is Nalini Johnson, planner for the village. I want to present to you a proposed or suggested text amendment related to section .405, which is the permitted encroachments into the required yards, front, side, and rear, in the zoning code. And the proposal relates to simplifying, part of our initiative is continuing of amending or proposing amendments to the texts, to the zoning code, to make the process for construction and reviews simpler, streamlined, and to enable fewer reviews to go back and forth, clarify the rules, and so on. This particular text amendment idea relates to window wells. And I have a couple of slides I'd like to present. These window wells are not defined in the zoning code, but they are part of the building code definitions, and they can change over time. So we're not going to pull into definition to the zoning code. But these are window egress, and I'm going to have the building commissioner really explain it to you in detail. But you can see from the photos, most houses, if they have a basement, they'll have a small window, and there's an area around the window that needs to have some space allocation to it. And in this case, our village code on the left side of this slide talks about window wells needing to be able to encroach into the required yards by two feet from the side of the building. However, the side yards sometimes are too narrow to provide for that. So we are proposing a modification to this category in the permitted encroachment section to read as follows. Window wells to be a maximum of three feet or to encroach a maximum of three feet into any required yard setback, but no closer than five feet from the property line, nor encroach into any drainage or utility easement. So basically, the idea is to keep encroaching items away from the easements. A lot of times, we receive proposals from architects that will show the window wells encroaching into the easement, which is provided for drainage and utilities and so on. And so then we have to send it back. They revise everything, and sometimes it means redesigning the whole building. So this proposal is to let them know ahead of time what needs to happen with the window well so that when they submit it, it's not a, you know, re-review based on just the window wells or a redesign. So this image shows you a little bit of what we're looking at in the office. We'll look at an architectural plan that'll show a window well area. And in this case, you see 36 inches from the wall, and you would need an additional five feet. So that would be a total of eight feet for a side yard. And our zoning code shows that a minimum of six feet is adequate. So they'll submit something with six feet, but yet they need about eight feet. And that's where the discrepancy lies. So the next slide shows us a comparison with different communities and what they're doing in terms of their window well requirements. Glen Ellen talks about eight inches or less above grade. They don't talk about setback or encroaching measurements. Lombard talks about allowing them to encroach three feet into the yards. So this is the most similar, because they also talk about not encroaching into easement areas. Darian talks about less than nine square feet in size, but they don't tell you, you know, in relation to the easement where it should be, just simply they talk about the size that it needs to be. Willowbrook talks about it having to be covered. LaGrange, no closer than three feet from any lot line, and no covers higher than 12 feet, inches above grade. So that's another aspect of it, you know, how tall, but we're not covering that here in Westmont. Elmhurst talks about needing to be covered, and covers needing to support the weight of a full grown adult. So that's a safety issue there. Lamont talks about shall be a regular shape or rectangular shape and above the flood protection elevation. So there's a relationship to stormwater and, you know, safety with potential flooding and so on. Clarendon Hills talks about a maximum of two feet into the side and rear yard setbacks only, meaning not in the front. Westmont currently allows for two feet to encroachment into the side yard or rear, but the side yard is the most important, critical. And we're proposing three feet and outside of the minimum of five-foot easement area. I'd like to introduce Jason to talk a little bit more in detail and explain what wasn't clear.
Good evening. So it's a little counterintuitive, but our current code is a single fragment of a sentence, which sounds easy. The problem is, it's very vague. So in order to get to something to be a little more clear for designers and residents, we have to elaborate on the words a little bit more. The other issue is, as Nalini alluded to, it has to deal with phases of reviews and when reviewers come into the process. What we've routinely tripped up on in the Village of Westmont is, as was said, it goes through a zoning and an architectural design and review. And by the time it works its way to the engineer to do their review, if there's a property that's dealing with either a new single family on it or a subdivision, there are easements that are added. You know this. You see this quite frequently here. It's new to some people, and they don't know the level to which detail, by the time they figure their design, that this is going to be a hurdle. So we're doing two things. We're giving this five-foot side yard setback, actually each of the yards, but five foot is the magic number for easements in the side yards, way up front in the zoning code. So designers get it, because that's the first place they go to look to see what they can do. And the other issue about three feet, and on the previous slide, you will see three feet recur frequently, that has to deal with egress windows and egress window wells. These are code requirements from most model codes that our neighbors, including ourselves, have adopted. So what we attempted to do was to honor the easement issue and have that at the forefront of the design process, and at the same time, allow for actually a little more flexibility with going into setbacks. And I can elaborate on that more after I say this one sentence, and if you have questions for me. The Village of Westmont's side yard setbacks are a minimum of six feet, but there's also an aggregate, and it's depending on the entire lot width. And it doesn't specify in our code how they need to distribute it, except for just the minimum. So if you have a 60-foot wide yard, six foot and six foot, because the aggregate is 20%, that comes out to 12 feet. Very easy to figure out. But if anybody has any larger lots, 80, 90, 100 square feet, let's use 100 because it's easier, that's 20 feet they've got to figure out. So they could still do six on one side, could be 14 on the other. Or you could have 10 and 10, or you could have 12 and 8. And what happens is, when we're stuck in our code language, as it is now, if somebody's got this 10 and 10, let's say, and they could only go two feet into there, it will never impact that easement area, and it's actually restricting how the house can be situated on the lot for something that's below grade and doesn't really affect anything. That's what we're trying to solve. Are there questions at this point?
So if an R3 lot needs to have a minimum six-foot side yard setback on each side, there's a bunch of 50-foot wide lots in town, a lot of subdivisions into 55-foot lots. There would be six feet on each side. They can project three feet into that setback, but they'd be into the utility or drainage easement if they were to do that. So what's the solution for them?
Part of the language of the proposed definition is, in no way shall we allow a projection of a window well into an easement area. And by moving that language up into the zoning code, it allows designers to take that in and figure in their design, okay, we're not even going to try to encroach because we know we're in a smaller sized lot, and it's up to them to... We're doing everything we can to give them the information upfront. So to answer your question again, they're not allowed to go into that easement area. That's part of the definition.
And having a one-foot encroachment probably is insufficient for... Because I think those window wells have to allow for ingress egress, and one-foot width probably isn't sufficient, so they just couldn't have windows along their side yard if they have a narrow lot like that?
So a couple of different things. Let's try and make sure we keep separate in our minds what an easement is and what a setback is. Nowhere have we ever allowed any encroachment into our easements. We just don't. And so what we have currently is a six-foot minimum side yard and a five-foot easement in a lot of cases. And someone thinks, okay, I'm going to design my house to go only two feet into that setback, because that's what the code says. But by complying with the zoning code, you're still encroaching into that easement area, and we're trying to eliminate this overlap and thereby creating the new code that has this hard five-foot line. But if there's a greater setback from the zoning side, they can still encroach into that setback, never hitting that easement area. That's what the goal is.
So to answer the question, if it's a... If all they could have room for is one-foot encroachment, they could not put window wells on their, the side yard of their house if there's a five-foot utility?
They could not put, and here's the distinction, they could definitely not put an egress well, because that's got a minimum distance. There are things called area wells, and you probably have them on your houses, smaller curved half-moon wells that are just designed to bring light into a basement. So we're trying to give the designers and the builders and the people in the neighborhood the ability to use their, they're a lot more readily without putting any impingement upon easements or anything like that.
And then just one other comment. You know, we've got that list, and I think it's section 4.05 of allowable encroachments into yards. Would it be good for a future amendment to have a catch-all saying, you know, the following list denotes allowable encroachments into the various yards, and no circumstances shall any encroachment encroach into utility or drainage easement?
So that's interesting. I don't want to say yes to that, because it's a very blanket statement based on everything that's in that matrix. There are a lot of surface things. Remember, there's a window wells below ground, and part of the easement requirement is not just surface drainage, it's also possibly utility stuff. So if they want, if the village wants to put sewer lines or anything like that through that area, that's really what's stopping it, is that window well below grade. So if you had an air conditioner above grade, it's really not that big of a deal going into the area. So blanket statement, we'd have to work on it, but we could definitely make it more clear. Sure. Nalini, I think, wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit to the response related to your question. You know, when we talk about side yards and widths of the lot, we're also talking about the width of the house. And there are a lot of different design plans that people have access to. And so what happens is, if they propose a sprawling ranch with, you know, let's just say, no access to a garage, and it's just simply, you know, building line to building line maxed out, then we're asking them to redesign the house and maybe, you know, choose a completely different design plan and redo the whole thing. So, you know, we don't have minimum housing widths or structure widths or maximums or anything like that. So they have a lot of flexibility in terms of not only the size of the window well, but if they really want a nice egress well, then they need to narrow the house and possibly go to two stories. And we're getting into that area of designing through the code, de facto, in a certain way. So those are just different things to consider when you look at this proposal. We need to balance things together, and so that's what I want to say.
Under the proposed change, we would have a lot of nonconforming, right? This is for future?
Anytime we propose a change that is a little more restrictive, you're by nature probably making more existing nonconforming situations. That's true. However, and please jump in, village attorney, if you would like, in the Article 12 of the zoning code, we've got a whole section devoted to existing nonconforming structures. People who have existing properties with existing window wells that may be nonconforming, they are certainly allowed to repair them and maintain them and so on and so forth. They just can't enlarge them or make encroachments greater than what is existing. So we're not stopping someone from using their house as it is. We are only skipping, which they probably wouldn't be able to encroach anymore anyway. We're just giving more flexibility at the design stage for a lot of these houses.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, I call Jason for clarity on this issue, too, because like Wally's saying, that if you decide to buy a house in Westmont, and it's an older home, and your window well doesn't meet this requirement, you're basically buying a nonconforming use without knowing it. And my concern was, is that bringing it to some sort of legal matter? But Jason, if you would explain that, that that's not the case, that it'll be allowed, and there's really a non-issue, so...
It happens all the time. You know, front yard setbacks have been changed in this town over the years. There's lots of nonconformities that are created when the zoning code changes. It always, as Jason said, has prospective application, that the existing homeowner or house is protected, it's grandfathered.
Yeah, because that's not going to get picked up by the attorney at a closing, and you're not going to know that, but there's a provision in our code to allow it. So it is kind of for all, for any new work to be done.
I would just like to confirm that there's no, as far as window wells go, there's no requirement that they be escape capable or...
So there's, that's kind of a loaded question.
Because every house has to have one. New house.
Every, well, that's new construction.
So this leads right into the conversation we're having, for example. You might have a very old house, or I shouldn't say very old, an older house, built under a different code set. We have a current building set that says if you remodel your basement, let's say it was unfinished and you want to finish it, you're required by our code to put in an egress well. And if you're going to put a bedroom down there, it has to be in that bedroom. And so there are times where the answer from the village is, no, you can't do that. If you can't find a way to accommodate it, no. And that's not always what people want to hear, but we've adopted the codes, and there are reasons for it.
In my recollection, I don't think we've, I don't recall where there was ever a request for a variance on a window well placement. As long as I've been on here, I think it's more from your building standpoint that clarification is probably required, because it hasn't been an issue at any time, in my recollection. Stoop, a side porch, all these things have penetrated into the side yard setback, and it became an issue, and it required a variance. I don't recall one with the window well.
We typically find solutions for window wells. People want them. We want them, because it's a safety thing. And we want people to enjoy their houses. And in the same situation I gave you, sometimes there's alternatives that we could think of, because we deal with this every day, that the homeowner doesn't. And so that's probably why, Commissioner Van Buren, you never saw anything like a window well, because we try and make those work. Any other questions?
Okay, Commissioner, discussions? All right, Nalini, please.
Sure, I just wanted to touch on that as well. In terms of window wells, they're not something that people are looking at and saying, oh, it's not aesthetically pleasing, or we don't want it encroaching into the side yard, because people are going to be looking in our window, like with a porch or bay window. So that's another reason, and I think you touched on the fact that, yes, this is something related to building codes and reviews and engineering and, you know, easements and stormwater, things that are invisible, but they're important. And we take on, you know, all of that activity behind the scenes where it's re-reviewed two or three times, or people are spending more money on engineering plans and redoing everything. So, yeah, we are trying to fix that behind-the-scenes thing and trying to reduce costs, contractor costs, architect, you know, engineering and so on, as opposed to the other variances that come through, which are for aesthetics or, you know, for other reasons.
Thank you. Any further Commissioner comments or questions?
I'll just say that, you know, I'm supportive, because it's something that streamlines the operation. It eliminates any potential for anything that would have to be, come through this cycle of various meetings to get approved. I think if it helps staff, I'm all for it, and as long as it doesn't have any legal issues, you know, we should do it.
And village attorney, anything else? No, thanks.
Chairman, I have a question. I'm looking at this list of the comparison communities, and it's interesting that these different communities seem to be all over the map with what they're concerned about. Lamont sticks out to me because of their interest in flood elevations. And then Elmhurst is afraid of someone stepping in and breaking their jaw, it sounds like. So those are interesting. I'm wondering, is this the time to consider those? Are we not concerned about those? It's a strange object, a window well in the ground, so...
Right. Couple of things. I've actually done reviews for more than half those communities in my prior positions elsewhere. Those are largely what they say, but they're not entirely what they are. She's trying to give you a flavor of what each community does, and you're absolutely right. They're all over the place, because it is a largely unregulated thing. And usually, codes like this come into play when somebody encountered something weird, and they wanted to make a code about it. So Lamont, concerned about flooding, absolutely. Elmhurst, maybe somebody fell in a well at some point. So we've actually considered both of these situations. Sometime this year, you might be hearing the fire department and building department coming to the village, so I'm giving you a little preview, about updating our code sets, our model building code and fire codes. We're currently in the 2012s. We're looking at the 2021s. At that time, when we go to update, we would require the window well covers and things like that, because it's just in concert with it. You could take care of it in the building code. It doesn't have to be in the zoning code. And then additionally, about the stormwater stuff, it's a little out of our league, and we would definitely want to bring the engineer into this, but that's a very good point that you saw.
Yeah, and I was going to touch on that, that the village in chapter 34 of its Code of Ordinances has extensive engineering regulations and guidelines, including floodplain protections, as does the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance. And it talks about all sorts of what buildings or encroachments or whatever are allowed within a floodplain, and I would imagine they're addressed there. And as Jason said, that's an engineering issue typically.
Yeah, totally is. I was just curious about it.
Actually, one foot above the BFE. Usually, the lowest opening of any building should be one foot above the base flood. That's pretty typical. Some communities are three feet that experience a lot of flooding, but typically, it's one foot above the BFE.
It's actually very fascinating. You brought up a good point. So if you look at Glen Ellen's, for example, on the top left, and then you look at Lamont's on the right, they're interested in two different things. Glen Ellen is interested in aesthetics. We don't want it too high, because we don't want to see it. And you got the other town that experienced flooding, they're like, we're totally fine with having that higher, because it protects the houses. It's a little bit deeper discussion, but they're looking at different things.
That's all. Thank you. Yeah, I'm in support. I think clarifying the code is always beneficial.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else? In that case, Wally, did you, your hands up?
No, no.
Okay. Then, under Planning and Zoning, 24-2021, item, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board of Trustees, the following item, a zoning text ordinance, ordinance text amendment to the Village of Westmont, Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, Article 4, Section 4.05, Paragraph E39, to allow window wells as permitted encroachments under certain circumstances in all required yards in the residential zoning districts. And I understand, too, for commissioners and the public who's watching this, that the findings of fact are part of our vote on this. And would it be helpful, Nalini, do you think, to read the findings of fact, or John, or is that just assumed?
Yes, so good question. For zoning text amendments, we don't have to do findings of fact. That's only for variances and special uses. And normally, we don't read findings of fact.
I understand that findings of fact are exactly the same for both of these items on our agenda tonight.
There are no findings of fact required.
Okay.
So none were prepared.
Very good. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve this 24-2021. Do I have a motion?
Our motion to approve. Lavoy?
Second.
Go ahead. Lavoy?
Who's second?
Second, Sharp. Motion to approve, and second, discussion on the issue. Roll calls, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons? Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, item closed. Next item, PZC 026, before we introduce it. Nalini, what happened to 025?
Well, we have them out of order. Some of these get held back. 350 North Grant is not ready. I'm an engineer.
Okay, just curious. PZC 026, 2021, Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a request from the Village of Westmont regarding the following proposed zone ordinance text amendments. This one, text amendment to the Village of Westmont, Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, Article 14, definitions, to amend the definition for lot coverage, to remove lot coverage bonus for permeable pavers.
Okay, so this, this text amendment, thank you, is similar to the other text amendment. There is a reason for it that is of an urgent matter in terms of timeframe. I think you all know that we're amending the definitions as a whole, but we don't want to wait for that process to unfold before we tackle some of the more pressing items, such as this one, which, for similar reasons, we are proposing or suggesting. Sorry about that. Okay, so the current code language is actually the definition of lot coverage, contains the following. The percentage of a zoning lots area covered by any building or structure... The percentage of a zoning lots area covered by any building or structure, including but not limited to patios, sidewalks, driveways, or in-ground or above-ground swimming pools. Now, it goes on to add regulatory language, is what I'm thinking it is. Fifty percent of the square footage of decks shall count towards calculating lot coverage in instances where a semi-permeable membrane is installed at grade level or the ground below is left entirely uncovered. The bonus shall only apply to decks which are constructed to allow a reasonable amount of stormwater to flow freely between the slats to the ground below. Fifty percent of the square footage of permeable pavers and other permeable materials shall count towards calculating lot coverage. The village's community development department shall maintain specifications which may be amended from time to time, which define acceptable permeable pavers and other permeable materials that may be used to qualify for the 50% lot coverage. So this is our current definition. And as we were looking at it, and it was proposed to me by the building commissioner, the definition is long, is quite long. The definition contains regulation standards and procedures which may or may not belong in the definition section. And, you know, we feel that zoning code definitions should simply define. And the third item is that stormwater regulations are enmeshed in with the definition. So not only is it regulating, it's also regulating stormwater specifically. Which, as was mentioned before, is covered under Chapter 34, which is outside of the zoning code. So based on that, we thought we would remove the second or, you know, two-thirds of the definition. And this is what we had left. The percentage of a zoning lots area covered by any building structure or other impervious surfaces, including but not limited to, we added a few items, houses, foundations, garages, sheds, gazebos, parking lots, patios, decks, walkways, sidewalks, driveways, or swimming pools, whether in-ground or above-ground. So this definition tries to, well, first of all, it removes the decks and porous pavings from the definition, which are other terminology items that would need to be further defined. And the second thing is, it tries to include everything that is a structure, that goes on a lot, you know, something man-made, that type of thing. And then we thought about a little bit more. We said, maybe we can simplify it further. Because there might be some things that we did not include here that should be. So then we came up with this one. The percentage of a zoning lot covered by any and all hardscape improvements. The idea being that you have hardscape and greenscape. You have natural environment and you have something that was built. Do we want to be involved in trying to figure out how hard the hardscape is, how permeable it is? How does it relate to the soil? What's the purpose of it? Or what is the purpose of a definition in this case, in the zoning code? We're thinking it's more about neighborhood character or intensity of use. You know, if you're covering an entire area with concrete, like in the cities versus more of a pastoral look. You know, that type of thing. Is that what we're going after when we have these zoning regulations? That's one question. So this proposed definition is clear, we feel, and it's short. And it measures built, covered versus unbuilt, uncovered. It does not distinguish between impervious and pervious, so it removes any reference directly related to stormwater. It is not prescriptive, does not dictate material types to include in the measurement of land cover because as we talked about with the window wells and the BFE, every lot is different. It's a neutral measure, it can be used for stormwater. The stormwater, an engineer can look at the coverage percentage and draw from it and add other elements of stormwater mitigation to their analysis. But it can also be used as a measure of land use intensity. And does not include regulatory standards and allows for flexibility and standards and so on. That will be covered under Chapter 34. So the success of this definition text amendment is directly related to addressing all the other issues with stormwater under Chapter 34. And so this slide shows you the lot coverage calculation that we undergo every day. We look at the lot area, the total area, we look at the area of the house, the garage, paved areas, and then we come up with a ratio. And that's the extent of it. So when we try to include pavers, how porous are they, how big is the area? Is someone going to pour concrete over that area later on, you know, all of those things? We can't really make it reconcile with the lot coverage calculation item that we're working on every day. It just doesn't, we're not to that level of analysis. So to have a definition with all that complexity is not something that on a practical day-to-day, we're really addressing. So we're really doing a disservice. We're not really doing the part that is intended. So I will leave you with that. Maybe Jason can talk a little bit more about it.
Suppose, Nellini, explain. We ourselves went back and forth on this. And whatever definition we're referring to, the first one where we truncated it, or the second one where we tried to change it to make it more plain, the goal is the same. And that is to take the stormwater calculations and elements out of the definition of lot coverage as it pertains to zoning, because it's not the same thing. And the zoning code, if we wanted to put back in language about building structures, flat works, and so forth, we're not opposed to that at all. We're just trying to get your input and what you think is easier to understand. So having said all of that, the issues are multiple and I'm not going to delve into them right now. I'm just going to field what questions you may or may have. Our concern, to recap, is stormwater is being shoved into the definition of lot coverage and it's actually making reviews and whatnot difficult. So what makes things difficult for us makes things difficult for the applicant and the resident. So at this point, I'm going to stop talking and just see if there's any questions.
One thing we discussed when you ran this by me preliminarily is the problem with treating permeable pavers, for stormwater purposes at least, as, you know, 50%, counting them only 50% towards lot coverage, and the same with decks. And now that's being eliminated from the definition. It seemed like you had great rationale for doing so. Maybe you could touch on that.
Sure. So when speaking specifically about permeable surfaces, pavers that were designed to be permeable, which includes the base courses underneath, which are much more substantial and stratified than just, hey, I want bricks and I want sand on it. One of the issues with that has to deal with keeping them clean. And once you hit about three to five years, depending on the installation of the improvement, if no one cares for them post-construction, they essentially become impermeable. And what we were trying to accomplish by giving the benefit or bonus or credit to somebody ends up, in the end, just not working. So that's where I came, and this is not something we tried to look at on our own. We brought in our engineer and got their thoughts on it and so on and so forth. That was one of the biggest sticking points. And then when you go years down the line, let's say you want to sell your house one day and that person comes in and buys your house and sees this permeable driveway, and it might be rutted or divoted or whatever, and they say to themselves, I really don't like permeable pavers for my driveway. I want to take it out and put concrete in there. Well, if that particular property was already built to the max with the lot coverage plus the bonus over, our answer would have to be, no, you can't do that because you're already built out to the max. So it makes things easier for the applicant and for the village to allow someone to swap out materials. And Nellini was harping on the fact that materials for a zoning code, we don't much care about. And if the residents are not going to care for post-construction, the installations that go in, we're just kicking the can down the road.
Please.
Yeah, I'd just add one comment to that. And that is that in addition to what Jason is telling us, there's two seasons a year when permeable pavers don't really work. And that is, is when they're frozen. You basically have direct runoff if the substrate is frozen. It happens in the spring, winter, and in fall, where we can have an intense event. And even though you have permeable pavers, it doesn't help any of us because they don't work that way if that substrate is frozen. So the 50% coverage is legitimate from that perspective as well.
Following up on my question and one of your comments, lots of times we see people use permeable pavers, at least up to this point, to get that bonus because they're maxed out with their lot coverage. Now with this rule change, let's say 10 years down the road, someone, either the permeable pavers are cracking and need, I guess normal repairs and stuff are okay. What if someone says, you know what, I've got so many bumps and I don't like the permeable pavers and they're cracking. I just want a concrete driveway. What's the answer? Because...
I do want to be clear because I'm looking at it on the spectrum, way on this, onto the spectrum. And here's what I mean. If someone's got space on their property to do things, material changes, great. But oftentimes, the problem is that we encounter, it's because people have maxed out the way you said, and they're trying to use that bonus. So when they do come to us and say, hey, we'd like to change this from permeable pavers to concrete, staff has to do a variety of things such as go back in time and take a look at files and so on and so forth to find out what the percentages were. Was this a permeable base, was it not? And ultimately, if it was, we have to come back and say, no, you can't do that.
But they could do a complete replacement with new permeable pavers?
I apologize, I misunderstood what you're saying. Yes, they could. They could, if they do it the right way and they want to take that all out and put in the permeable pavers and match what was there, yes.
Even though the permeable pavers don't provide any, I mean, maybe for a few years, but any real stormwater mitigation?
Therein lies the rub. That's what we're trying to avoid. I think that's what you're trying to lead me to, and I wasn't picking up on it, but you're correct, yes.
Okay. And then decks, those are eliminated as well. And I think you told me some of the concerns over giving a credit for, you know, 50% credit for decks, and that's being eliminated now.
That same type of information now, I've spoken to some of you prior to this. And it's, for decks, it seems a little more static and then a little more controllable. But the fact of the matter is, is again, if that person, whether it's the installer or somebody else that comes in later and they say, I don't like decks, it gets warped, it's this, it's that, and I just want to take it out and put a patio in the same exact configuration. And if we're at that limit, the answer by the village is, no, you can't do that. So it's about making things less unknown and staying within the same parameters of percentages without giving each property an individual way to go above and beyond that. We can't track. That's the other shoe. We don't have the resources. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the money to actually, truly, properly make sure that people are doing their post-construction best management or make sure that what was installed is still what's there. We just don't. It's a great idea, but we just don't have the ability to legitimately enforce it.
Because we're the public hearing on any issue like this, we get it all the time. We are not experts, or should we try to be experts on stormwater management? But that's what we hear from the public. And so it's constantly here. I'm all for this, making this clear. But this is what we hear, and we're expected to, by the public, to try and solve the stormwater problems when we are no position to do it.
That's fair.
And this should help, actually.
Yeah, it would help, is what I'm saying.
Jason, I have a question. Are you in a position to speak to the village experience on the streets and the alleys that the village has added permeable pavers to at the expense, the upkeep, the...
I can't speak to, I cannot speak specifically to the village's streets. There's a section of permeable roadway that we were trying out, and we've got some alleys in the downtown area that we do. What I can tell you is, the village does try and uphold their post-construction best management practices. We routinely, whether it's annual or biannual, vac out those streets and remove and replace individual pavers each season. Well, that carries a cost. And if the expectation is that the resident is supposed to do something similar, that might be an unanticipated cost out of pocket after you've paid for whatever your product is. So I can't tell you much more than that at this point.
And would you anticipate that if we recommend this and it goes forward and becomes part of the village code, that this would just cause an increase in the number of variances requested constantly on people trying to...
Fair question. Similarly, we were talking about, are we moving people into the realm of being existing nonconforming? Unlike the other issue, we do have the ability to, I'm going to give you two examples. First of all, and I'll get back to this, there is an exception in the code which we can talk about under the residential part of the zoning code, which is that 35% to 40% issue. But I do want to say that there are a lot of people in town who have, let's just say, gravel driveways. Gravel driveways are no longer an approved surface for the Village of Westmont. And when somebody goes to, and they want to say, increase the size of that driveway, or lengthen it, or what have you, they can maintain what they have, but they can't expand on it. And so therefore, when somebody says, all right, I'm going to do asphalt, and they might have gravel from front of the yard to the back of the yard, that actually is considered impermeable surface if it's been driven over. And that might automatically put them at a level of, say, 50% lot coverage unknowingly. So one of the things that we do here is to not to stop people trying to do improvement. We already see, oh, that's like 50%. So when and if they try to do an improvement, we try and be reasonable with them and say, well, let's find a way to reduce that area. Can you take a little out of this patio, or is this walkway out here being used anymore? Or can you narrow this a little bit? And I'm going to use a little bit of hyperbole here, but if somebody shows me that the gravel area is 1,000 square feet, they want to put in an asphalt driveway and it's going in the right direction at 990 square feet, I'm all for that because it's reducing the amount of imperviousness on the lot. And although it's over, say, the 35%, it's going in the right direction. And we will have had a chance through our reviews and whatnot to aim this water flow to, say, public ways instead of neighborish properties. That's our goal when we do that. It's a little more than what you asked, but I want to let you know how we handle it. So getting back to the exception, what we want to try and do is try and get these little requests off your desk. So if somebody's going to do whatever they're going to do and it's going to put them at, say, 35.5% or 36%, we do have an ability in the zoning code through an exception to qualify those. And it has to deal with some engineering. It has to deal with the ability to verify three things. One, that it's not in a moratorium area. Two, that it's not in a low depressional area or a village self-diagnosed problem area. And then the third one has to do with the fact that if we're going to allow that, there's a little more engineering jargon, I'm not going to bother to throw at you, but suffice to say, three engineering criteria have to be satisfied. So we are trying to still uphold that exception and keep those off of there. But if somebody wants something that we can't give them and they want to push it forward, we're not going to stop someone from trying to come before you and see if they can do that. We're just trying to handle the small stuff before it gets there.
Okay, thank you.
The village attorney has a question.
Anyone else? Input, questions?
If I may. There were two definition options presented, the one that was in the packet and the one that was presented tonight about, I mentioned, hardscape. Hardscape is a landscaping term. So there's hardscape or softscape. And hardscape, you know, if an outsider were to see hardscape, they'd know it refers to things like patios and walkways. to things like patios and walkways and landscape-related items. They wouldn't think house, they may not think driveway, et cetera. So if we use the word hardscape, and I'm fine, this may be quibbling a little bit, but I like the idea of adding the including but not limited to, and then giving some examples that include things other than traditional landscape elements, so it's clear. Or use the definition that was in the packet, either one, I don't care. But related to that, what if something is temporary, like, let's say, a playhouse that's built on the ground? That would probably be attached, would count towards lot coverage. Or benches, like benches technically, landscape benches technically fall within the definition of hardscape in, according to some definitions, so...
Fair question. So, surface-applied items. Stepper stones without base courses under them would not be subject to this. Aforementioned swing set, or something like that. Because it's got no foundation, it's got no base course theoretically, then no, that would not be subject to this either. Just like an air conditioning unit wouldn't be subject to it.
So if we use the word structure as like, including but not limited to any structure, foundation, driveway, whatever, by using the word structure, that by definition means it's permanently affixed and would exclude anything that's not?
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
And we have to be consistent in our department, not just where we are now, but going into the future, our successors, that they understand that. And sometimes spelling it out might be the better way to do it, giving those examples. Sure.
Okay. So I have...
So how would a chicken house fit in if it doesn't have a base?
Right, there's a million examples, I guess, you know.
... okay, so the line of questioning here leads me to think that we're still thinking about it in terms of stormwater. You know, we're still thinking about, you know, all of this in terms of how it all affects. But lot coverage really is a measure of land use intensity. Land use really has to do with permanency, has to do with conversion, transformation from grassy nature to something pretty permanent, you know? So in that line of thinking, you know, a bench would be something removable, a swing set is, you know, going to be destroyed in a year or two. So we're not going to be looking at that level of detail, we're looking at almost like a permanent transformation of the environment. You know, once you have a concrete parking lot, it's going to be a very rare situation where you tear it out and return it to a natural state. Again, it's not a stormwater definition, it's a land use intensity type definition. So whatever we come up with, this is why we took out the second definition, because it has the word impervious. Hardscape, yeah, I can see where that would really not be it either. Or we could remove hardscape and just simply call it improvements. There's a real estate definition of improvement, which has to do with that type of approach of modifying the environment permanently.
Well, do you recommend rewording the text amendment before we vote on it? Or, for example, I noticed that the amendment as proposed has permeable pavers, but it doesn't have anything about decks, decks, for example.
Before I go off on a tangent, I think Commissioner Sharp wanted to say something.
I really applaud the conciseness of this definition. I think it does leave room for some expansion for clarity. I mean, hardscape, I know that word, it makes some intuitive sense, probably more sense than improvements. That's probably a foreign word to more people. It doesn't have some, any kind of built-in notion of what you're talking about. So I like that word, maybe you say structure and hardscape, but then it's like...
Is hardscape defined in our definitions?
No, I don't believe so, no.
But again, if you look up the definition online, whether Merriam's or wherever else, it talks about landscape improvements.
So you could say covered, I mean, I would say structure or hardscape, but then I have in my mind, well, someone might ask about a pin for hint, like, we're talking about chickens, a pin, that's a structure, but it's not a covered structure. So there's refinement there, but also I want to make sure I heard correctly that if, if I installed permeable pavers, because I was at my max, I didn't, this is theoretical, but I'm at my max and I use that bonus, and now, like you said, they're bumpy, they're hard, I can't maintain them, I want to install, or better yet, I bought this house and they had that, and now I want to install a regular driveway, what I feel like is a regular driveway, I should be able to do by right, and then I'm told I can't do this anymore. Doesn't seem fair to the resident. And I want to make sure, I mean, is, if we take the stormwater management aspect of this out of the zoning code, does that mean we also take the ability to have the variance out of the zoning code? Like, is this no longer a variance issue and it's a building issue, building code issue?
It's...
Before we answer that, I think I want to go to that guy over there and get his impression on stormwater as a variance. Is that even something?
Well, to answer your question, if someone wanted to put a, replace permeable paver driveway with a concrete driveway and they were, would be over the limit, they'd have to come in for a variance, a zoning variance, to, for lot coverage. And part of the discussion, whether you want to admit it or not, is going to involve stormwater, because that is one of the underlying purposes of having a lot of coverage.
That's the problem, it's really hard to pull it out. The same with the deck and leaving the space between the deck, you're still going to give 50% for that. So you're doing it for the stormwater.
Right. Now, there's other reasons too. There's aesthetic reasons of wanting to have green space and livable area and things like that. But stormwater is certainly one of them, and if someone comes in for a variance, that's going to be a point of conversation. And I think what staff was getting at is, they don't want to incorporate stormwater terms into the definition of lot coverage. That makes complete sense. But it doesn't mean it's not, if someone comes in for a variance, it's not going to be discussed and relevant to the variance request.
Right. So if I own the home and I opt, okay, I'm told I need a variance, okay, I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay a lot of money for the driveway, I'll pay $500 for the variance, and at least I can talk to you guys. But then I'm asked, well, you know, you need to do this very expensive civil engineering survey to see what your, what your water's doing and what your water management plan is. That seems like an overdue burden on homeowners who are simply trying to replace their driveway. Like, how do we qualify, what do we do with the, with the water storm management?
It's interesting, because on one hand, I think what Jason said is, you can replace your permeable driver, permeable paver driveway with a new permeable paver driveway, even though in three to five years it may not be permeable anymore, if you fail to maintain it. But the answer is you can't replace it with a concrete driveway.
But if you look at your neighbors or yourself, if you have a permeable driveway, it's usually the same design as if it had been concrete to begin with. It's only taking up that much space. Just because you put in a permeable one, well, maybe in your total calculation, it's been, it's been maxed you out. But if you claim that it's not measurable, and the person wants to pull it out and put in a concrete driveway where the permeable one was, I don't see why you'd want to have to make that person come in. Because you're, first of all, you're saying, I don't think it's, if it's been there five, six years, it's, it's no longer meets the definition of permeable.
I do want to answer that, but Malini's been trying to get the word added twice here, so I want her to be able to...
Well, there's a lot here, and it's all valid, and it's all super interesting and important. And I think this is where we start to transition into two different aspects of this text amendment. And there's really three. The first one is a definition. The second one is regulations and so on, you know? Do we allow people to replace with concrete or not? That's one aspect. That is not going to be answered today because it's not part of the definition. And the third one is stormwater management in town, on a private side and on the public side. We've got green infrastructure that people talk about, and we also have something called low-impact development, and it's something that personally, you know, we've talked about internally with the engineer, and he is suggesting that we create a separate section, whether it's be, you know, chapter 34 or wherever, that really goes into this. May I go into this a little more? Okay. So the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I want to separate this discussion. I don't want to go too much into this low-impact development idea or green infrastructure idea. If you go on our website, you will see that we're already encouraging people to, you know, do different things with their property to encourage stormwater to do what it, you know, to behave. I mean, water flows downhill, there's gravity, there's all sorts of things going on in town. And the reason I'm bringing this light up is because permeable pavers are only one aspect of stormwater. And we cannot put all our hope on that to solve the stormwater situation in town. So it's just one aspect of a lot of variety of different things. So I'd like to take us back to the text amendment idea, which is simply the definition of lot coverage. If we want it to be part of stormwater, that's fine. Maybe we define it under some other section, because each chapter has their own definitions. Or is it a zoning issue? Or is it both? So that's for you to let us know. But we just really want to take it to this point. Now, we are not ready to vote on a definition for lot coverage because we don't have those answers to the other questions. Do we want to allow people to concrete paved areas that are permeable or not? Then we can, you know, table this.
I do have answers to those questions. So first of all, we're talking about something that was enacted less than 10 years ago. And there's a limited amount of people who've taken advantage of this bonus. What the goal of this is, partially, is to stop that proliferation, so you won't have that question in successive years when people are trying to max out their properties. So number one, not as many people as we might think, and we're just trying to stop it. And number two, as far as those coverages, yeah, it seems right. Pavers, concrete, my car goes here, what's the big deal? It's a very tough sell to people. So both points are very valid points that you brought up, and that is what we're trying to accomplish with this in a nuts and bolts fashion from the review side. And as Malini has said on multiple occasions, we're immediately going to, what if this, what if this, what if this, what if this? Let's start with the lot coverage definition and try and clarify what lot coverage means. It is inextricably with our code intertwined with some stormwater and engineering elements, but to be so bald-facedly included in the lot coverage definition, that's what we've been struggling with.
But I'll beg to differ for a minute, and it gets to Wally's point, I think, or Commissioner Sharp's point. It's a zoning issue when we're talking about legal non-conformities, and you can't expand them, you can't destroy them and try and replace them with another nonconformity, you can only repair them and maintain them. So if someone has what is becoming a non-functional permeable paver driveway, I understand there aren't a lot of examples in town, but there might be 20 or 30 where over time, they're going to want to replace their driveway. If they're up against their lot coverage, the, what I think you're saying is, all they're allowed to do is replace it with permeable pavers, even though those permeable pavers... I know this gets into stormwater, but really don't have any real permeability if they're not maintained after a few years.
Actually, if I could just jump in, John, that right now, I mean, there's, and I agree with Wally, who was commenting earlier, is that we don't want to get into the technicalities of stormwater here, just because we don't want to be experts at this. This is not our purview, this is not why we're here. But it does come into play on planning and zoning issues, in general terms. Extracting those details of how they're handled to staff is the right thing to do. But nowadays, there's permeable asphalt, there's permeable concrete, you can actually spray the hose on the concrete and watch the water just disappear. So you can actually replace your, your brick paver driveway with concrete and still have it as a permeable surface.
Well, we have a, we have an example of that here in Westmont. We have a full three blocks where we're doing a test on that.
Uh huh.
But it's not, we're talking about a daily thing that we have to deal with here.
Yeah.
And...
But someone could come and say, I replaced my driveway, my brick driveway with a permeable asphalt. You spray water on it, it just soaks it right down. And the products are out there, and I think removing those technical components on how we solve those problems to the engineers is a good thing. But I think there are other products out there where we're not going to necessarily handcuff somebody that wants to replace their brick driveway with concrete, they have options out there.
Fair enough. I raised it so that staff knows if they, if this definition is approved, that when it comes time to implementing it, if this issue comes up, how are you going to address it? And if the issue is, you have to have some sort of either permeable paver that you maintain or permeable concrete or whatever, that's the answer. As long as we're consistent in, you know, telling people that.
Well, I'm not sure if that's the answer, because, you know, right now, we send things to an architect to review for bulk, and they're going to look at their architectural plans, they're going to look at the decks, you know, the slats, the number of feet off the ground, the underneath the deck, if it's permeable or not, or if it's being covered, or if it's going to convert to patio, all of those things are looking at. Zoning, personally, we're looking at use and we're looking at ratios, and that's it. And then it goes to bulk, and then they're looking at all those details. What we're proposing, along with the engineer, and we're not ready with this proposal, which is why, you know, it may be premature to, you know, get into these issues right now, is that the engineer's going to review more for that kind of thing. So he's going to be looking at coefficient, dissipation rates, and materials, and what type of concrete, and all those things that the architect may or may not get into, because those are engineering questions. He's going to look at the grading plan, he's going to look at all those things. So right now, we're not really recommending a policy. I know he's talking about replacing like with like, which I think makes sense. Conceptually, I think it's simple, you know, if it's porous paver, replace it with porous paver. Until and in such a time, we have a little bit more definition on what we're doing. But today, we just want to go back to the definition of lot coverage. And if those things need to be ironed out before we define lot coverage, that's fine. But just to alert you that, the definition as it stands now is very difficult to implement on the review side. And, you know, we can keep it as it is, knowing that, or we can try to modify it today, or we can come back some other time.
I think the concerns I expressed were not, I like the new definition. My concerns are more about the future people, you know, coming and wanting to update their, which is a separate issue, so that can be solved separately and later. I like the definition. Like I said, I think we can add some more adjectives or examples, but...
I don't, if we like the theory of it and we're just wordsmithing it a bit, that is definitely something we can figure out with the village attorney really quickly. But I do want to say that food for thought, this came into play back when the area experienced significant flooding, between '08 and '12. And sometimes there's these transitional rules that come into place, and it's good to have a transitional rule, but it's transitional. And there are times to really tighten things up. And I think now is actually a good time to do it. It gives the zoning division an ability to apply a zoning code reasonably, and it'll just make the engineering division more involved in the process and how these things are considered, built, and maintained. So just throwing that out there, food for thought at this point. Anywhere once around, are there any questions on this?
So I would ask the village attorney, you know, given the wording of this proposed text amendment right now, that basically just changing the definition of lot coverage...
Yeah, so the way it's worded on the agenda and in the staff report talks about changing the definition of lot coverage as to permeable pavers. That's a little too restrictive. I think when you read the agenda item for a vote, just after it says to amend the definition of lot coverage, period, and strike the last part of that. And then I think the issue is, is there a definition? You were presented... I think the issue is, is there a definition? You were presented with two options today, one that was in your packet and one new one. Is there a consensus between the two? They're, they're ultimately pretty similar. Do you like the idea of the new definition that was simple that was presented, mentioning hardscape? The, hardscape improvements, and do you wanna add including but not limited to, and give some examples, or do you think that's sufficient?
Right now, we have, we added "structure." As we were talking, I kinda wrote in the word "structure," or "hardscape improvements." And we could say including but not limited to. The, the prior definition, the prior proposed definition talks about impervious surfaces, and, and that I do feel needs to come out, because that's a stormwater term. And again, we have concrete that looks wonderful, and I've seen it. I was at KU and talked to the engineer, and he actually did it for us, and it's incredible how that works. I mean, you can't tell the difference between one concrete and another. And I don't think in a pre, you know, engineering stage of review, with the plans that we get, that we would ever be able to know how fast the water goes through, or where it's gonna go, or what material it is. It's just concrete. It'll say concrete, perhaps. So, we could just keep it to the percentage of a zoning lot covered by any and all...
Just add the "s" on "structures."
Structures, or hardscape improvements, including but not limited to, and maybe three or four items, you know, houses, foundations, swimming pools, you know, instead of having a long list.
It might be worth adding, you know, of a permanent nature, to go back to some of the...
I think if you used the word "structures" by definition, there is a definition for "structure," and, and that includes something that's affixed permanently. So I like the addition of "structures," I think that's a good addition. Whether we wanna give examples or not, I, I don't, I don't care. I don't think it's necessary at that point.
I wouldn't think so.
I think that's pretty clear.
Because somebody could question, if you list any examples, they think, well, whoa, what I have isn't on that list.
Yeah.
So it just opens up a can of worms. What you have there, I'm in agreement with. I think, any of those "structures," "structures" is defined. You may wanna add a definition for hardscape.
Yeah, I do, too. I think hardscape.
And we're saying "and all structures or hardscape," because it's basically all of them. But as someone mentioned, I think, you know, the bench idea that, that, you know, includes, are we getting into the weeds a little too much with things that are impermanent? So maybe the word "permanent" might be a good idea, just to...
Oh, when we say "permanent hardscape structures..."
Permanent.
Yeah. A bench on a concrete platform is permanent. A bench in the grass, isn't it?
Right, right. Like a masonry bench, you know, with a, a fire pit that's constructed into the ground versus something that's placed or removable. So the percentage of a zoning lot covered by any and all structures or permanent hardscape improvements.
Love it.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Okay, so, given the text amendment as proposed, and the alterations, changes, additions as proposed, I believe we're ready to, ready to vote. Does anyone have any further discussion before I propose that?
Just one final clarification. Just to be clear, decks now are counted 100% towards lot coverage?
That is where I have a little bit of, like, you know, that idea that it's not necessarily touching the ground, you know, might exclude it from that calculation, and that's where an architect's...
I know I spoke with Jason about this, and you said, people throw gravel underneath their decks all the time, even after the fact. There's no way to monitor that. Deck should be taken off the list and just counted, you know, as a 50% bonus. I thought you said counted 100%, because there's usually a patio, or gravel, or something under there.
Not only that, they put a liner before they put the rock down, so they don't have weeds going through it.
Yeah.
So you, you really have a totally impervious.
And with our remove and replace policy, if one removes a patio, we're gonna look at the dimensions, and it's gonna be replaced with something else, and automatically, we're looking at making sure that the numbers match, so...
Because under, like, the rules of statutory interpretation, if we had a credit for decks that was in the definition, and we've taken that out, any court or whoever would look at that and say, well, there's no longer a credit for decks, because you removed that. So I was just clarifying that there's no credit, 50% credit for decks now.
Correct.
Okay.
And so as you suggested, we would just eliminate the part of the statement about lot coverage for permeable pavers.
Yes, put a period after lot.
Change the definition of lot coverage, period. And...
Well, with, all structures and permanent hardscape.
We don't have to read the definition in, in the motion.
Correct.
Just put a period after, yeah, lot coverage, that we're amending the definition of lot coverage, and that's what the motion is.
And we have the recording of the discussion.
Wanna move it? Wanna make the motion?
Yeah, so move that.
Second, Sheriff.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve PCC 2621, request to change the zoning ordinance text amendment to the Village of Westmont Code and Orders, Appendix A, zoning, Article 14, definitions, amending the definition for lot coverage. Discussion on the...
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, you can move forward with this, and...
So, we have no items on the agenda for April, and the following month, in May, we will be looking at other proposed text amendments. If you have any that you would like as a priority, we can certainly work on, on those. Otherwise, we'll be working on probably density, use tables, and they use, and they use definitions as a whole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Any items?
I'd like to, I've said this before about staff, and that, and it would be very easy for staff to sit here and, in their office, and wait for someone to come in, and it's yes or no. You know, and I, over and over, I see examples of staff going beyond where they have, need to, and they go where they feel they need to. And to make it easier, it could be very easy to be, yes, no, you can do that, you can't do that, yes, you can do that, but only here. And they, they look for results and second opinions and that, and I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, all of you. Anyone else have anything else for this meeting? The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.